Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Riordan?
Here.
Mr. DiAmelio? Mr. Furadamondo? Queen?
Here.
There were to be three items on the agenda tonight that the school district has opted to not be here this evening. We'll go to item number two, which is the final land development plan, 986 and 996, East Railroad Avenue, BMM SBA Railroad LLC, also known as Bryn Mawr Medical Specialists.
Thank you.
You're Kristen?
I am, nice to see you again. Good evening, Commission members. I'm Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg, Rubin, Mullin, Maxwell &amp; Lupin. I represent the applicant. As you know, we've been here a number of times. This is our second trip here for final approval. We do have preliminary, and we were here in October, where you gave us some comments and some work to do. Since then, we have revised our plans, we have resubmitted them. Your township engineer has reviewed them and has issued a review letter dated yesterday. What I've handed you is a waiver letter that reflects the waivers that are in additions to the ones we've received with preliminary approval, and they are two. We have addressed the items that we felt you wanted us to since we were here in October, meaning that we've been to the shade tree commission. They made recommendations that the ash trees be treated as opposed to taken down. We've agreed to do that. We did the additional infiltration testing, which the township engineer requested us to do. We actually found another place where there was infiltration, and we have revised the plans to send as much water to that infiltration basin as possible. We have provided the truck circulation plans for delivery and the fire truck. They have been reviewed and approved by the engineer and the fire marshal. We have added the handicap crosswalk that you wanted to see on the plans. We've removed the parking from the 10-foot landscape buffer that was in question last time. We've created compact car spaces. Only required parking spaces need to be 9 by 18, and we are over and above the required parking, so we were able to accomplish that. We have removed the two driveway aprons on Railroad Avenue. Remember, there's three. Two are being closed, one is being modified. And lastly, there was an interest that we achieved that four-foot grass strip next to the sidewalk along Haverford Road, and we have done that as well. So, the only thing that we have left on the table are two waivers. One has to do with the iron pins that we discussed last time. If you remember, the wall exists along County Line Road, so we're unable to put the pin in the ground. We've worked out a modified ability to put the nails on the top of the wall where necessary. The second waiver, as you can see in the letter from Robert E. Blue dated December 13, 2018, deals with that infiltration. It's a partial waiver. We are able to achieve as much infiltration as possible on this site. We're still a little off, which is why we have that partial waiver. That's really all I have to say. I know you're familiar with this project, and you've seen it a number of times, and I think we've cleaned up the plans to the point of final recommendation.
You got anything for us? You got some news?
Did you want to go through the township engineer's current review letter?
We can if you'd like. Most of them are just comments and acknowledgements of things that we were able to achieve, but if you'd like to go through them, I'll do that. Is that your wish, Mr. Capuzzi?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. The first item has to do with the recreational use. As I've stated at our last meeting here, I've having discussions with the township solicitor regarding that recuse area or payment in lieu thereof. The second item has to do with the shade tree.
Christine, how is that conversation going? Last time you were reluctant to give us an idea as to why you thought you were entitled to that.
Not reluctant, I haven't gotten much communication from the solicitor, so I'm sure I'll have that before we reach the commissioners, obviously, because that'll be part of our approval resolution.
So, that's still up in the air as far as, but it's in the township's lap as far as giving you an answer?
It is.
Okay. And what was your rationale for asking for that relief?
Well, if you must.
I do, I must.
The way the code is written, it has to do with the dedication of land when land is developed. This is not something that's addressed with the redevelopment of property like we have now. When you redevelop property, you don't have the opportunity. If you redeveloped over and over and over and didn't dedicate land, you would be paying a fee over and over and over, which is unconstitutional. So, the code is really written for a brand-new application of vacant land being developed for the first time. You either dedicate land or you pay a fee. You can't dedicate land over and over, and you can't pay a fee over and over. So, that's my argument to the solicitor.
Okay, so, that means there must be a flaw in our ordinance, would you say?
Well, no, that's an interpretation. That's how I read it, and I'm sure that there has been a perpetuating interpretation that maybe needs to be rethought.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The second item has to do with the shade tree commission review. As I said, we've done that. Third has to do with the planning module. We have submitted our flows and are awaiting that review. Third has to do with PennDOT. We all know we are under PennDOT review for our HOP, for the driveway that we have out for Haverford. Four has to do with the easement that we've talked about for the sidewalk along Haverford. We've designated an easement area along Haverford. Your engineer recommends that we document that with the township solicitor. Obviously, that's okay. Number six has to do with the partial waiver that I discussed about the infiltration. Seven has to do with the cover over certain pipes and providing the documentation that we have from the manufacturer that we have provided the proper cover, so that's fine. Eight has to do with adjusting the timing of the intersection signal if we need to. That's a PennDOT issue, so that's a will comply. Nine acknowledges that we are providing that quick curb separation so people can't make lefts into our Haverford Road entrance, so that's just an acknowledgement. Same with 10, also an acknowledgement that the fire code official has reviewed and approved the fire truck access, truck turning template. Nine has to do with the pedestrian access having been provided from the handicap spaces to the building. 12 has to do with the cross-section being provided for the sidewalk along Haverford. That's fine, will comply. 13 says, please revise the parking tabulation on sheet two of 20. That's obviously okay. 14 acknowledges that we don't need a waiver from a section that we thought we might need it from, so that's fine with us. And 15, A through D are all minor note tweaks, clarifications relative to detail. All, of course, are fine with us. And 16 has to do with a detail for the compact car parking, and we'll obviously do that.
I have a couple questions. I don't think the plans accurately depict the buffer strip along Haverford Road, okay? Again, it's a matter of the buffer strip has to start at the backside of the sidewalk that's going there. It can't go out to the right of way, because part of the sidewalk would be in the buffer. It's the same situation that you had on Railroad Avenue. Okay? The ordinance says that the buffer has to be planted to its full width, which means you can't have a sidewalk in the buffer. So, you need to move the limits of the buffer along Haverford Road from your easement line for your sidewalk back 10 feet.
I guess we'll have to look at that with the township engineer. I don't know how to review that as I stand here before you.
Okay.
It didn't come up in any of the review comments.
No, but we brought it up last week, last time you were here.
We talked about the buffer along Railroad Avenue, Mr. Capuzzi.
We talked about all the buffers adjacent to the roads, that they had to be planted to their full width.
Our conversation revolved around the parking that was in the buffer along Railroad Avenue, and that's why we removed it from that area. But we'll certainly look at that, Mr. Capuzzi.
It applies to Haverford Road as well as Railroad Avenue. How do you intend to enforce the?
I'm sorry?
How do you intend to enforce the truck size restriction?
Well, we're a medical office building. We don't have deliveries from trucks larger than a FedEx or UPS. There's no tractor-trailers coming in this site for any reason whatsoever. It's not part of the aspect of the user. So, we've provided the truck turning templates for the trucks that we perceive being the largest that would traverse this site.
So, you're not going to do anything positive in regards to making sure that no one, no large trucks enter the property?
I don't know what you mean by positive.
Well, a sign or something like that at the entrance saying trucks over 20 feet in length aren't permitted on the property?
I mean, we could. If your engineer would think that was a good idea, we could do something like that, but we don't envision any tractor-trailers wanting to come on the site.
I guess the option is to go back to the zoning board and ask them what they thought, what their intent was by putting that restriction in. They must have had some reason to put that in, and they're expecting something positive to be created as a result of that.
Well, the zoning hearing board has conditions, and they are enforceable by your code department, so if they're violated, we have violation notices that could be issued.
Okay, so it's up to us to please your side.
This is how it goes when there's conditions to zoning hearing board applications.
Okay, all right. The island at the entrance from Haverford Road.
Island at the entrance at Haverford, yes, sir.
Okay. Is that mountable curb?
I'm sorry, is it mountable curb?
Mountable curb.
Is it mountable?
There was a foot chop there with the mountable curb that's been removed. It's striping that.
Oh, is that just striping now? Okay, all right, great, okay. And then, have you had any discussions with Aqua PA about a meter pit requirement, a water meter pit requirement for the project?
I believe they have been told that they have capacity, but no, we've not had that.
Okay, because in my experience, that they require meter pits now on all commercial type of developments, which means you may end up with a meter pit in the front of the building somewhere along Haverford Road that you're going to have to fit in somewhere, okay?
Yeah, we'll be mindful of that.
Fine.
Anybody else have anything? Go ahead, Paul.
What will the pedestrian walkway be made of?
I'm sorry.
What will the pedestrian walkway be made of?
In the site?
Yes.
From the handicap parking to the door? Is that what you're talking about?
County Line Road.
County Line Road.
Pedestrian walkway.
We have striping in the site from the handicap spaces to the front door.
Putting in a pedestrian walkway.
There is no pedestrian walkway. On County Line Road.
No, on Railroad Avenue.
I'm sorry, on Haverford, we have sidewalk?
No.
And on Railroad, we have sidewalk. There's none on County Line Road.
No, I know that. I'm saying on Railroad Avenue, putting in a pedestrian walkway.
We have sidewalk all along Railroad? Is that what you're referring to?
I was wondering whether you're going to make a sidewalk or something else.
There is sidewalk all along Railroad Avenue.
All right, good.
No, that's days, Paul. I'm good. Is this the final plan?
Yes, sir.
Make a recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation of it, that we, or make a motion that we make a recommendation to the board commissioners that they approve the final land development plan for.
I'll second.
BMM SBA Railroad LLC with the following conditions. One, that all the comments contained in the township engineer's review letter of December 10th, 2018 be addressed and resolved to the satisfaction of the township. Number two, that signage be added to the two entrances to the site indicating that vehicles larger than 20 feet, or trucks larger than 20 feet are not permitted on the property. Third, that the buffer strip along Haverford Road be modified to show a 10-foot width behind the proposed sidewalk on Haverford Road. And fourth, that if required, a fee in lieu of open space be paid to the township in the amount specified by township code.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. DiAmelio?
Yes.
Mr. Furadamondo?
Yes.
Mr. Queen?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.
You too.
Thank you.
Item number three is the preliminary.
Number two.
Huh?
Number two now.
Sorry, there was. Huh?
It's number two, first one.
It's number two. We scratched one, sorry. Preliminary, final land development plan, 924 Haverford Road. That's first veterinary center LLC.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name's Jim Greenfield. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me this evening, I have Kurt and Gabrielle Hyde, who are the owners and operators of the property and the veterinary center. I have Dan Meyer from Site Engineers, and also Joe Lombardi, who's our architect. And I want to give you a little bit of background. I think some is required before we get into the specifics here. You may remember that about two years ago, we came to see you because we were on our way to the zoning board, and we wanted you to look at a plan that we had proposed at that time. A great deal has happened since then. This property at 924 Haverford Road is in the, is in an area that's mixed office and residential use. There's an office building with a substantial surface parking lot directly across the street. The, from our property north to Landover Road, eight of the 11 properties are office buildings. And as you can see from an aerial of the site area, there's a tremendous amount of impervious coverage in that area. Our property is not one of those. It has a tremendous amount of impervious on it. In fact, about half of the 59 properties between Landover and College are owner-occupied residential properties. The remainder are either office, institutional, or rental properties. The veterinary practice on this site probably dates to the late 19th century. The, the current building on the site at the rear of the property in the northwest corner where the veterinary center practice is conducted has been there since 1926. And it predates almost all of the residential dwellings in the area. The veterinary center has been recognized by the township as a lawful, non-conforming accessory use, and it's a significant asset to the community. And in fact, when we were, before the zoning board, particularly last spring, we had several clients of the veterinary center testify about how valuable the service is, and we had presented petitions to the zoning board that were signed by 296 clients of the veterinary center recommending that we get a new facility there. The current practice has outgrown the existing building, which is only 1,800 square feet on two floors. And by the way, is also non-conforming as it exists because it has a height of 24 feet. As an accessory structure, we would only be permitted 12 feet on the property. And in fact, what we're going to propose to you will comply with that section of the code. And the building is deteriorating. It's really critical that it be replaced. We had two cases before the zoning board in the two years since we last saw you. When we initially went there in 2017, we were seeking three different variances. We proposed a new building at that time that was about, that was 6,200 square feet of footprint with a total floor area on two floors of 9,200 square feet. During the course of the hearings on that appeal, we introduced a second plan which reduced the building, the footprint, to 5,121 square feet with 6,821 square feet of floor area, also on two floors. And we moved it back at that time to where it was 98 feet off Haverford Road. I think initially, it was about 55 feet off Haverford Road. The zoning board rejected those proposed variances, so we went back to the drawing board. And in fact, we talked, among other people, with Laurie Hanlon-Whitup and worked out a design that she felt would work much better on the site. So, the building that we went back to the zoning board with in the early part of this year has a 3,000-square foot footprint with a full level that's entirely underground. The building will be residential in character. It's now proposed to be located 123 feet off Haverford Road, and that's the same plan that's before you tonight. We only needed, at the end of the day in that hearing, a single variance, and that was for, that was to exceed the 50% limitation on the expansion of both the lot area and the floor area occupied by a non-conforming use. We are proposing, and did propose before the zoning board as well, that we have a maximum of five veterinary physicians on the premises at any one time. We rarely have that. In fact, I'm not sure it's ever happened, but we use as many as five different physicians, including specialists, and the proposal is that that would be the maximum. The parking is tailored accordingly. We've allowed 20 spaces for the five doctors, three spaces for six employees, and two for the dwelling that remains in the northeast corner of the property along Haverford Road. The medical personnel that we're proposing is the same as what has been on the property for some period of time. We expect, therefore, no increase in traffic to the site. We submitted to the zoning board a traffic report from Frank Tavani about two years ago. We continue to rely on that. Mr. Tavani's conclusion was that even if he assumed that the traffic into and out of the site would double, it would have no impact upon the traffic on Haverford Road or at any of the nearby intersections. And in fact, we're going to improve our access to Haverford Road by widening the northernmost driveway that currently serves as the main access to the property and eliminating two curb cuts that exist south of that along Haverford Road, of one of which is actually a curb cut to nowhere, and the other of which goes to a small parking area along Haverford Road, which the zoning board insisted we remove, and we are amenable to that, and in fact, that's part of the plan. So, Dan Meyer, our engineer, is going to take you through the plan, and we'll be, after that, we'll go through the township engineer's letter point by point if you wish, and we're here to respond to any questions you may have.
Yeah, we'd like you to go through, as soon as you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dan Meyer with Site Engineering Concepts. Quickly go through some of the sheets here. Existing site, as we mentioned, they have two driveways into a parking area here, and one of the conditions of the zoning hearing board is that that be removed, which we will do. There's an existing residence at the front of the property, and the veterinary center is in the rear with the parking area.
Is the residence occupied by the, some of the vets or the owners or?
I don't, I, is it?
Hello? Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
It's Dr. Giuliani.
And then, what's being proposed is the, the existing house will remain, 24-foot driveway coming into the site, a configured parking area with the 25 spaces that Jim mentioned, and then the existing veterinary center will be demolished and a new building built on the south side of it. And then, just quickly about grading and stormwater. It's a very flat site. We'll actually be raising the rear of the site a little bit to make the parking in the building work better, and then we have a subsurface infiltration system beneath the parking. We're going to have to make some shifting of that for the phasing of removing the existing building, but we have plenty of area within this parking area to make that configuration work. So, that's a real quick overview. If you have any specific questions about that, or we could get into the review comments.
I noticed there's a sanitary sewer line. I assume it's a township line that runs across the back of the property?
Yeah. We are still doing some research on that. So, this was surveyed by Momini Associates originally, I believe, in 2004 or 2005, and they came back in 2016 and updated that. Panoni indicated to us that there's no record of this sewer on the township sewer map. The surveyor sent us a plan from 1927 that shows an eight-inch sewer. And the owners have said that in the existing veterinary center, there's a pit, and you open that up, and like the sewer's only about two or three feet below grade. So, what we aren't sure now, now, I will point out that this existing residence has a cleanout in the front yard, so we imagine that was connected to the sewer in Haverford Road as likely maybe all the other houses have been, but at this time, we don't know if that existing structure in the rear connects to that old eight-inch line, or was it also reconnected up front? So, I sent an email to Panoni last night, seeing if they had, it could help me, you know, track down the status of this thing.
Okay. My only concern, if that is a township active sanitary sewer line, I don't know what the width of that easement is. It doesn't look to be more than, I don't know, five, six, seven feet.
I have feeling this is actually an error. I think this dash line came out of a CAD file that was representing the sewer in one. So, that, really, we're not showing any easement at this time. And one of Panoni's comments is that we should provide an easement for it, which we can. We inadvertently placed the storm sewer, stormwater system over top of that. That would shift up, and the building is, I believe, something like 25 feet from the sewer line right now, the proposed building.
Based on comments from the township, we did look at this when we were in front of the zoning board. The township insisted that we maintain 10 feet clearance from the line, and we've done that.
Okay.
We're assuming that, I don't think there's a recorded easement, but we're assuming We're assuming that, I don't think there's a recorded easement, but we're assuming a 20-foot wide easement.
All right, but if it is a township line, you would be willing to create an easement for that line as part of this land development, right?
Yeah, we would be fine with that.
The new building is going to then connect up to the sewer in Haverford Road? Am I correct?
We showed it connecting here, but that was before we had any information about the sewer. And, you know, the sewer runs underneath the existing building, so the building's from 1926, I think Jim said, so, you know, the sewer's getting to be 100 years old. We think it's prudent to get out to the road, out to Haverford Road.
My comment is, I just, I just, I think it's a can of worms for you all, so if you can run it out and connect up and have the right cleanouts and everything else that you need, you're going to have a lot safer situation.
Yeah, no, that's, that's planned out. Once we, once we get, we just got this information about the 1927 sewer plan in the last few days, so.
You said, your attorney said that there's going to be a full level below grade?
Um, uh...
Yes. It's a full, it's a full level, fully below grade.
Okay, and you said that pit that you identified was only a couple feet deep? I guess I'm getting to the point, you may have to put in, an ejector pump in the basement to get the sewage out of that lower level to wherever you...
We understand that, yeah.
You want to run us through the... You want to run through this?
Sure.
Amendment one is just an acknowledgement of the zoning hearing board activity. Number two is, says if necessary, a loading area should be indicated on the plan. We've spoken with the owners, and they have a delivery pretty much every day, but it's in the morning before the site opens. It's just a small, sort of a FedEx-type truck, so we really don't feel it's necessary. There's not going to be, when this truck shows up, there's not going to be an issue with him, you know, occupying one of the parking spaces and maneuvering in that parking area.
Again, small favor.
We will be requesting, I guess, three waivers. Item three talks about a location map, and there's an ordinance that requires that within 2,000 feet, we show all the property lines, streets, zoning, and water courses. We happy to show the streets, the zoning, and if there are water courses. There's probably, within 2,000 feet, there could be, well, there's certainly dozens of small residential lots. There's really no easy way for us to get that on the plan. So we'd request a waiver of showing the property, but we would show the various zoning districts. Number four, we just need to add some property information for this property here. Number five is just adding the width of Haverford Road to the plan. Number six is another waiver we would request, showing all the storm sanitary and public water supply lines within 400 feet of the site. We basically, you know, in addition to the sewer we talked about in the back, we really just have utilities in Haverford Road, and 400 feet would be, you know, sort of getting us out three times the width of the property on either side here. So we feel like we've shown everything. We're not impacting any of that existing infrastructure, other than connecting to it, and meanwhile, we're taking an existing building offline. Number seven is just providing more detail about the existing utilities and then the proposed gas and electric, and we'll add that to the plan. Eight talks about the ordinance where if the Board of Commissioners decides that sidewalk should be provided. And what we're suggesting, right now, there's no sidewalk coming up to either side of this property. If the sidewalk was extended from Landover to this property, then we think it would make sense, but right now, it's, it would just be pavement that goes nowhere. Number nine is about street lighting, and we would request a waiver there. Ten is just about getting the correct signature blocks onto the plan, and I'll contact the township about getting that information. Number 11 is about the sewer. I think we've pretty much covered everything that they're, they're talking about there. And as we said, we would provide the 20-foot wide easement. 12 is about the Shade Tree Commission reviewing the proposed landscape plan. 13 is about permanent survey monuments. We have one corner that, that needs a monument added. 14 is about submitting the planning module exemption, and we'll do that. The project MEP is still working on developing the flows for that. 15 is about getting a highway occupancy permit for the curb modifications and the driveway modification, and then also for the utility connections in Haverford Road, and we'll do that in January. We wanted to sort of get through the first round with the township. 16 through 26 are just very sort of detail-oriented things about the stormwater management and erosion sediment control. I'm happy to go through one by one if you'd like.
You know, but I just want to let you know that that really, that whole area, starting right at Landover Road, is the headwaters of Cobb's Creek. So everything drains into that basin from both up in Bryn Mawr and also coming down from the, that Cooper Town area that's called behind the P&amp;W and the beginnings of Cobb's Creek, along with a bunch of, a bunch of actual artesian wells that come up all along where that Cobb's Creek begins is right there. So you have issues right on the other side and in the neighborhood that after 70 years of living there, I know where they are. So you need to be cognizant of that. It's not, it's not a minor issue, okay?
And are you talking in terms of flooding is happening there, or?
You, that area wouldn't have been built if it wasn't built in the 50s, okay? Because it's built, it's built with a, and I'm talking about the community behind you. It just would have never gotten the permission to be built, okay? So it's there. My son lives in that community. I know the neighborhood really well. I'm just pointing out to you that every single thing that you do, you're going to be amazed at how high the water table is. It's going to affect your building for your own benefits, and I'm just letting you know that. It's just amazing.
Okay. And I didn't mention before, but just because of the topography and the results of our infiltration testing, the system actually will be infiltrating the 100-year storm. So it'll be significantly less runoff from the site when we're, when we're completed, both rate and volume. Again, if you would like, I can go through each of these 10 or 11 stormwater comments. They're very sort of minor details, notes, things like that.
You will comply with all of that?
Will comply with all of them, yeah. And then I'll run through the rest. The others, we also will comply, but they're probably worth discussing. 27 is just about getting some current township design standards on the plan. 28 is about a pipe trench detail, getting that on the plan. 29 is about one of the inlets and a so-called trash guard that we're proposing to put in there for water quality. It's basically keeping debris out of the infiltrating system. There's some concern about whether this would fit in that inlet. We've, we've looked at it closer, and it won't be a problem. We had a note on the plan. There's a proposed to be a, sort of a sunken courtyard, if you will, on the west side of the building, and that's because there's, there's going to be a surgery room in the lower level of the building, and they'll need to be able to get dogs outside from that room. So that's, still needs to go through final design, but it will be below grade. It will not be able to drain to the stormwater system. The plan is to put in a stone bed beneath it that will have sufficient volume to capture the 100-year storm for its drainage area. There will be redundant pumps that will have emergency power supply as well. So we're kind of putting belts and suspenders on that. It's, you know, it's not an ideal situation from an engineering standpoint, but it's just absolutely necessary for the operation of the veterinary center. And the architect and his mechanical engineer and plumbing engineer will be working out the details of that, and we'll, we'll support it from a stormwater perspective. And 31 is related to that, about the stone bed and how that's all going to function, so we'll, we'll provide further detailing on that. 32 is about a detail for the connection of the sanitary sewer lateral. We'll get that. I'm assuming there's probably a sewer authority detail they prefer. 33 is about a trash receptacle. There is an existing dumpster on the site, and what we're proposing to do is, right now at the west end of the parking, we have sort of a small paved, paved area here, which is for these last two spaces to back into so they can then leave the site. We propose to put the dumpster off that. That, basically, it's just this backup space, so it won't be, there will never be anyone parked there that would obstruct this dumpster from a trash truck coming into the site. And then 34 is about the proposed lighting. Just a real quick look at this plan. From where you are, but it just appears that there's maybe a less illuminated area down the center of the parking. So we're going to have our lighting consultant just take another look at that and determine if it meets the ordinances and if anything further needs to happen there. Probably as simple as, you know, getting a fixture that maybe projects a little bit further out from, from the fixture to cover that area, but still keeping the light from glaring off the site. Just to recap, you know, we're looking to comply with everything. We are asking for the three waivers. One is on the location map, that we wouldn't show the property lines. The second would be not showing any additional utility information, other than what is across our frontage in Haverford Road and information on that existing sanitary sewer line through the rear of the property. And then the third waiver was about the street lighting.
Do you have any more questions?
How does the board feel about the sidewalk issue? Understanding the sidewalk to nowhere wouldn't, might accomplish much, but just to be consistent, since we've talked about it on other recent projects.
We are, the people who just were here before you are going to have a sidewalk that is going to end up going to nowhere, but it's going to be across their front. In the long run, that's going to be a necessity as this becomes more and more used as a, as a, for office space for everybody else, and in the long run, it's going to have to happen. All complying and putting in a sidewalk now makes an awful lot of sense to me, even if it goes to nowhere, you'll be done, because as we go along, we're going to need this in the future, and we'll probably be making some modifications in the next year or two that'll affect that. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't have that on. But I think it's critical that we, we ask for it across the street. I think you all ought to be doing it on this side as well. I'm respectfully requesting you reconsider the sidewalk and just put it in. It's not a major expense.
You say across the street, you mean the, the one that was just here?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're all the way up at the, at the corner, aren't they, up by?
They're, yes, they are. They're at the corner.
Yeah, they're up.
Right. But across the street from you, where they also have a building, the same people, they never put a sidewalk in, and now people, okay, are having trouble walking along there. It's a, it's a major issue for the community. And in every single time one of these buildings comes before us, somebody from the community at one point in its succession comes to us and say, why can't we get the sidewalks? So I don't see it as a make or break for you all, but I see it as something that if you could help out, it certainly would be nice and, and...
Sets a good precedence, right, for the...
And I think in the future, we're going to require it as, that road is changing. It's a different corridor, and for whatever it's worth, when you come over Landover Road, you are one of the, it's, it's another gateway into the, into Haverford Township. Right there at that corner, and for the next block or two, that's, that's Haverford Township. I'd like to, I'd like to see us start working as a group to get each of those entries into the township to look, have some uniformity and look like it's a welcoming community. Sidewalks are welcoming, and it helps people walk. And we've got a P&amp;W down there, pardon me, it's, I think, called the Route 100, or maybe it's not, Norristown House P Line, but I'd like to see some consistency, and I know we're going to work on that in the next year or two, so.
You okay with that?
And you have, and you'll see, and there are little paths where people are walking. You can see where they've lost their, people are using them as a sidewalk, so if you all could put yours in, then we'll work on trying to work out the rest of them.
I'm sorry to interrupt, guys. Even though we can hear you in this room, this meeting is being filmed, and nobody that's watching, either YouTube or on, you know, anything else, is going to be able to hear anybody talking from the audience. So if you're going to talk, just use one of the microphones, okay? Thanks.
Yeah, because when you were up here the last time, that was one of the things we asked, that they'd put in a sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I think we're fine with that.
Thank you.
Just make sure there's a four-foot wide grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk.
All right. Ask you that.
You guys have anything else for the engineer? Because I was wondering if the, if the architect is here, if he could walk us through the architecture a little bit? You guys mentioned it was a residential in character, and it's only 12 feet tall, right?
Yeah, as, under code, it would be 12 feet tall. It will be slightly pitched, right?
If you could use the mic.
Use the mic.
My name's Joe Lombardi. I'm with Architetra, architectural firm in Paoli. I have, we didn't come prepared to present here, but I can pass out some images and We're trying to keep the, I got some action, please. Keep the building residential in nature from a, you know, footprint standpoint, as well as from the building. This, this is an overlay of the, of the building on the, on the site. And as we reduced it to the 3,000 square feet, it's not much different from some of the residential properties that are, that are there. We have a 12-foot eve height, and then we had a 22-foot mean elevation.
Do you have any idea or sense of what the construction is going to be, what the look is going to be on the outside, Joe, finishes?
Pardon me?
What kind of finishes you're going to have on the exterior? Is it going to be brick and stucco or siding?
Are we looking at a, like a stone base with some type of siding, either vinyl or a fiber cement or something of that nature? We are designing this to be highly energy efficient. We're going to follow a program. It's currently for a residential program, but it's a super insulated envelope with highly efficient windows, so we're, we're going to use probably 40% the energy of a normal building of this type.
Joe, in developing the program, I noticed on the original building that there's a kennel, an outdoor kennel. Is that going to be incorporated in the new design?
There's no outdoor kennel.
So it's not?
No.
No.
This is an image of where the courtyard in the rear. We plan on doing some terracing of that to make it more open from the lower level.
Is there a way to get from that lower level to the upper level?
Yes, there's a stairway, so you can... Yes, there's a stairway so you could exit from the lower level and then go out to the courtyard, and the courtyard won't necessarily all be impervious, it will be planted in some grass pavers and things like that, and then there's a stair up that would have a gate on it.
The other question I had...
Rob, there, there's the stuff right there in front of you.
The other question that I had was, and this might be to, to the engineer also, in that, out of respect for the sewer line that's there, if that has to set, if that has to stay, you're saying that the whole parking configuration and the building would be shifted forward towards Havreford Road?
No, no, everything, everything works now with that sewer where it is, the storm system, as we've shown it there, would have to move. The parking would, would be built over top of that existing line, and the proposed building is, I believe, about 25 feet from that line.
So the stormwater management system would go on top of the sewer line?
No, no, that's, that's...
That would be shifted?
That's a, I'll call it an error on our plan, we need to shift that.
Just wanted to clarify that, okay.
But we can move that anywhere within that parking area, so we've got plenty of room to move.
Okay. And another question I had, just out of curiosity, in that I, I pass the site every day, what's, what's being delivered as far as the trucks going onto the site?
Medical supplies, dog food, cat food, so we have vaccines for surgeries, any kind of supplies in regards to that.
So it's a daily drop-off pickup?
Absolutely, yeah. We have, we don't keep a lot of things there, so we have everything fresh, so nothing is expired, so we have medication come on a daily basis, you know, supplies for bandaging, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Daily supplies.
What are your hours of operation?
We're open from 8 to 7, and we're open Saturdays from 8 to 12.
And do you board animals?
No, we don't. I mean, we have a medical board, so let's say we have a surgery that needs to stay over because we have to watch it, we call that a medical board, that we do have on occasion, but in general, we don't have boarding, no. And if you go on our website, it always says, there's no boarding advertised ever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Williams?
Yeah?
Is there anything in the township stormwater code that talks about loading ratios?
Not specifically Angelo, but it does, you know, reference the B&amp;P manual and everything, which goes into that.
Do we, do we enforce that, or are we more concerned about the amount of time it takes to drain the basin?
I think that, you know, we, we will enforce that where we think it's necessary, and, but the bigger issue is whether that basin drains in, in, in the appropriate amount of time, the 94 hours.
Is that 72 hours or 96?
96, I'm sorry, yeah.
96, okay.
I'll jump in, it, it's less than a five-to-one load, loading ratio, and the infiltration testing shows it'll drain within the required time.
Right, I'm just saying, we may not be so concerned about the loading ratio as we are about the amount of time it takes to drain, you may be able to do something within, make the basin smaller without pushing it, that's all I'm suggesting, okay? You can look at that.
If that's an option and it works for us, that'd be great.
Thank you. Want to make a motion? Do we have to make a motion? Yeah, it's a final.
I thought it was a...
It's a preliminary.
Oh, it's a preliminary, fine.
It's not final. You'll be back before us again for the final?
We will.
Anything that you want to ask any of the board?
No, I think, we appreciate your questions, and it helps us highlight the issues, that and the engineer's report help us highlight the issues that we need to deal with, and we'll get those fixed for you before we return.
Okay, thank you.
It really looks good.
Great, thank you.
Buildings are nice-looking buildings.
Do you have to go back to zoning before you see us again, or?
No, no, we, I, I think we've, I think we've troubled the zoning board quite enough, so we're not gonna go back.
We're out there welcome.
All right, well, we'll see you then soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, since this is preliminary, we actually do need to make a motion for the preliminary plan. It's not a sketch, so it will be done by resolution.
Go ahead.
We would appreciate a motion to recommend approval of preliminary, so we can take that to the commissioners.
Paul? I make it?
I'll make a motion that we recommend preliminary approval for the Pets First Veterinary Center LLC project with the following conditions, that the comments contained in the Township Engineer's Review Letter dated December 20, December 10, 2018 be addressed to the satisfaction of the township, and that the three waiver requests regarding location map or properties within 2,000 feet, utilities within 400 feet, and street lighting, recommend that they be approved by the board commissioners.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, please call the roll.
Sir Rusa?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Yes.
As a client of Pets First, I must abstain from voting on this matter.
Motion is passed. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll see you later. Thank you for coming.
Lisa, just a clarification, this has nothing to do with you all, when the, when Angelo gave the motion for the very, for the first one, I think he quoted the date as December 10th on that one as well, and I believe that one is the 12th, so you might want to just change that. Yeah, the date on the railroad one was of the, the letter from Chuck Faulkner is the 12th instead of the 10th, there are different dates, okay? Just, just for clarity. Heard that, I thought, I think it's the 12th, and then I looked, and one of them's the 12th and one of them's the 10th, so it's just a matter of looking at them and thinking, yeah.
Were you signed those?
Yeah, I was here. Or they gave it to me.
No, this was, that was from May.
Hey Kelly, what, what minutes did Joe sign when he walked in?
The minutes to be approved this evening are from October 25th with Limwood Elementary School, and I believe the zoning map amendment and subdivision plan for 599 Glendale.
So he's already signed those?
They were given to the board, but they do need a motion for approval.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 25th meeting?
I second it.
Please call the roll, was I here? I wasn't here.
No, you weren't here.
I wasn't here.
Mr. Rusa?
Yes, abstain, he wasn't here.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. DiEmilio? Mr. Fierdumondo?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
I make a motion, we adjourn a second?
All in favor? Say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.